I'd like to welcome everybody to a joint town council school committee meeting Monday, October 28th, 2024, 6:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. Agenda item one, meeting call to order. Ms. Galazo, Chairman, very nice. Can we have a roll call? No, excuse me. Budge lead.
Good evening. I'd like to...
Shouldn't we do roll calls? Since it's a joint meeting, don't we have to roll call the school committee also?
I thought you just did.
Excuse me?
This has to be a roll call, the school committee and the council.
Okay, I can do that as well.
I thought, I'm sorry, go ahead. I thought you did call.
School committee, Brittany Davison.
Present.
Catherine LaPrio.
Present.
Andrew Murch.
Present.
Carla De La Cruz Devia.
Present.
John Shaw.
Here.
Martina Shea.
Present.
And Steve Kobinski.
Present.
I think that's it.
Thank you.
School committee, we have a quorum. I'd like to pull the record, Council Ortiz has arrived. Okay, moving on to presentation, Mr. Val.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to share with you a long awaited report. I would mind the town council back in, as we prepared the fiscal year 22 operating budget for the public schools. We agreed to set aside Chapter 70 funding that was provided to the school, to the district, to fund a study for a master facilities plan for our schools. Over the course of that next fiscal year, we constructed an RFP, selected a firm, Context Architecture, and Mr. Jeff Shaw is here with his team this evening. This firm then spent a great deal of time reviewing the conditions of all of our school facilities, and they'll go into great detail this evening about the recommendations that they have brought together for our master plan. The need couldn't be much more urgent. As I'm talking to you today, West Street Elementary School has an elevator that's offline, and the estimate for repair will be at least $150,000. Simultaneously, the oil tank and supply system at that school needs an emergency repair, tens of thousands of dollars. We have a Mason online who will be repairing a section of the wall at West Street School that's potentially a safety hazard that you'll learn about this evening, $10,000 at least. We've spent thousands and thousands of dollars in the last few years patching school roofs. I've said before, we believe we'll have a catastrophic systems failure shutting down one of our schools in the near future. So this work is critically important, and I'm really pleased that we're here together tonight to learn about what those potential options can be and how state funding can offset some very significant costs for the town of Southbridge. I would like to thank Kate Stoica and Maria Murray from the MTA for joining us today. They are our Southbridge Teachers Union Presidents. Clearly, their membership has a huge stake in this as well. And I'd like to thank my central office team who's here with me today. And I do want to apologize to all of you. There was a miscommunication with our firm, and they only brought 10 copies, and we will rectify that and get you hard copies as well as electronic access to these documents so that you can spend time perusing them on your own, because obviously, it's a lot of information. The master document is about 600 pages, so certainly getting that electronically would probably be helpful. So at this point, I'm going to stop with my comments, but I am going to introduce Jeff Shaw and his team and thank them for their presentation this evening, and they are planning on taking questions at the end because they're certain that you will have many. So thank you for your attention.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Shaw. I'm principal at Context Architecture. I'm going to start up the presentation for you. All right, there we go. So as you just heard, we were selected to perform this study. Our firm, Context Architecture, partnered with basin Studios to put together this study. It took hundreds of hours by a huge team of professionals to review all of the school facilities and the educational assessments, as well as put together the results of this study. And I hope that you will see that it's well worth the study that took place. Our firm specializes in municipal buildings, and Basin Studios specializes in the educational programming aspect. So the partnering of these two firms is a perfect opportunity to really study this from both sides. With me today is Mina Abdalmasi, is the project manager in my firm, and I'll go through a number of the study particulars, as well as Kristin Hill, who is with basin Studio, and she'll be going through a lot of the educational components. It's really important to understand that our work was focused on the educational outcomes of the students that attend the schools and how the physical infrastructure can be a factor affecting that, and what would be needed to really resolve some of those issues, and the configuration of the various solutions that might be able to be decided upon that would help the district ultimately move forward. So I'm going to introduce Mina, and I'll let him go over the plan.
Good evening, everyone. So an overview of the study that was conducted in three parts. Part one was the facility existing condition assessment. Part two, the educational and space needs assessment, and part three was the long range master plan. And the study covered four facilities.
Excuse me, could you get the microphone a little bit closer?
Sure. Okay, so the study covered four of the facilities here. Okay. Got it. Eastford Road and West Street, Charlton Street, and Southbridge Academy, Colab. Some of the status number here, those are, were four out of the six facilities in the district. The enrollment number at that time of the study was 955, and the study range was 30 years. So moving into the first part of the study. So the facility condition assessment was, the main goal of this assessment was to develop a comprehensive understanding of the existing condition of these facilities and understand what these facilities needs to operate for the next 30 years. We had a team of professionals that specialized in this area, over nine consultants that personally visited the facilities and produced reports. That can be found in the full document that Dr. Villar mentioned. The study covered everything, every aspect of the building, starting from the exterior, interior, has material accessibility and code requirement, as well as mechanical requirement. The outcome of the, of this study was divided into three areas, or three categories from immediate action, from zero to five years, and from five to 10 years, and over 10 years. And this number of years varies a little bit from the original study, which was aiming for 30 years. Study, but the 10 years present the most expected life of equipments and building components. So we expect everything that has catastrophic failure within the 10 to 12 years, based on the assessment. This is some of the findings of the assessment. As you can see in these photos, there's a significant water damage and implosion on the envelope, on the exterior envelope. You can see some of this caused some structural failure, with the corners is falling off, or the brick is actually falling off the building, and some of it that you can see inside the building as well. After that, we took all of this information to our estimator and put a price tag on every item that was developed during the study. The full document has an line item by line item, that for every item need to be replaced and within the timeframe that was categorized in. The $143 million represent the total budget for all four facilities within the three different categories. This is not a total construction or project budget, because when you factor all the escalation or the timeframe and design, that number increased significantly, which is going to see later in the study. I'll introduce Kristin, she'll talk more about the space need and program.
Thanks, Mina. So I'm with basin Studio, I'm an educational planner, and so have the opportunity to work with districts all over Massachusetts, the Northeast, and really the East Coast. And what Mina just presented is unfortunately not a unique project, problem for Southbridge. We see this very... Maintenance just builds up, and so looking at that, when we approach the space and programming side to get to our master plan, so we have the physical buildings and what needs to be done there, and then I'm looking at the space side, and we use as our standard MSBA, Massachusetts School Building Authority standards, and went through and understood what types of spaces do you have in the building? How big are they? How are they comparing to the number of students that are actually in this building? And what needs to be shifted and changed, or what's working well for it to go long term? So if you look at these kind of key considerations that we use when approaching the programming, there's the deferred maintenance, adequate programmatic square footage, so that's, is your cafeteria big enough? Is the music room the right size for the number of classes that are beating health within the facility? And then we use that to kind of prioritize the needs and align with spaces, what's working well and what we need to shift. Is there the variety of educational spaces? And you know, if you think about how much education as the world has shifted since these buildings were being built, there's a lot more kind of 21st century learning spaces, more of a variety than just solely in the classroom. And again, we base that on state standards, as well as the curriculum that's been happening in the schools. And are they age appropriate facilities? And that is really looking at, especially for those youngest children, the little ones that the state recommends to have bathrooms in the classroom. We see that as a huge issue with losing instruction time, that teachers and students are needing to go down the hallway to restrooms instead of being in the classrooms, because of course, they need an adult to go with them. So we approached this planning session, we went to every school, talked to their administration, walked through all of the buildings to really get a sense for how they're functioning and what's being happening day to day. And from those conversations, we developed critical success factors for the master planning process as a whole. And so, working with district leadership to refine this, we really came to, we want to ensure appropriately sized space to meet the needs of learning that's occurring, identify deficiencies per state standards, and develop multiple passports. So what we're going to share with you tonight is just information as we saw it, how it compares to the state standards, and what are some opportunities, and then there will be open for you all to discuss. So we saw a lot of things that's working really well in the schools. You can really feel that palpable culture of support, especially with the PBIS program, the dual language program, Connect, and Southbridge Academy. You can see the hard work that the district's been doing, and you can feel it in the buildings. What could be improved, really, on the facility side as a whole, there's kind of an assortment of different spaces that are not being used as for their original intended purposes because they're no longer needed for those purposes, as education has shifted and evolved over time. So I'll do kind of a high level overview of what that looks like at each of the four schools that we studied in depth, which again, are the three elementary schools and Southbridge Academy. So at Eastford Road, you can see that larger bubble, the MSBA guidelines, and then the smaller bubble is the current building. So it's undersized per state standards. The state standard for an early childhood classroom, which we know Eastford Road is pre-K to grade one, is 1,200 square feet. And the classrooms in the building, they do vary greatly in size, so creating really different experiences for what classroom your student ends up in. And additionally, the restroom portion that I mentioned, only four classrooms have access to those in-room toilets out of the entire building. The building is lacking a gym space. The multipurpose room is serving as both cafe, cafeteria, and a PE teaching station, and the stage has been taken over by PE storage, so there's not a usable stage in that building either. So those are all kind of large components that we identify in our program spreadsheets that's developed on the MSBA as a resource. And that's actually the only one that's undersized. All of the other facilities are larger than what you really need right now, but they're not quite serving the purposes that are needed. So West Street School, and you'll see a similar message at Charlton Street, those are all much larger than what is required, and so they actually have more classrooms than are needed. Some shared spaces, especially the kitchen dining and administration, are undersized, but the special spaces, art, music, and media center are all very generously sized. So those schools could accommodate a lot more students in the buildings than they are currently. So that's the good news. So that's true of both West and Charlton Street. You can see the smaller bubble is relatively scaled to what MSBA requires for the population of students. We did study school populations numbers from last year, but I don't believe they have shifted drastically for this school year. Southbridge Academy, which is currently at the Col Avenue site, is kind of filling the space that it has, so that would need more in-depth study of what are kind of the program's long-term goals, what does it really need? In general, there are things that they're using, like a full-size high school gym, that maybe the program doesn't necessarily need, but they're making use of it because they have it. And so if that program were looking to shift and move somewhere else in the future, those are things that we took into consideration. So that's kind of how we approached the educational needs assessment side and brought that together with the facilities condition assessment to come into this master plan. So we took all of this information and the goals and the conversation we had, and we said, okay, what are different ways that we can do this? How can we take these facilities that we have and really make the most of them for your community and most effective? So, Mina's going to come back and forth with me on this one, we tag team this a little bit. So we developed like seven different options to start off with, but we're going to present to you all three tonight. There are tons of different ways that you can slice it. And often, when we talk about options in the architectural world, it's like, oh, that makes sense, but we need a little bit of this. But these are kind of the three major categories of ways that we think you could break down moving forward with these spaces. So option number one, everybody stays where they are right now. Nobody's moving buildings or changing. There would be small renovations to help shift on the educational programming side, so that's like adding bathrooms to classroom, or some dining and kitchen spaces that are a little bit too small. But largely, this is about the strategic renovations of what Mina was talking about and Dr. Villar, everything that's needed to fix the physical buildings. So the benefits of that, everybody stays in their current school building and community. You still have two neighborhood elementary schools. The challenge is, there's significant maintenance requirements in these buildings while students are occupying the spaces. And as you guys, I'm sure, can understand, elementary school students in active construction zones don't mix well together. And there are potential, there are some things that are being duplicated, some programs that are existing in two elementary schools instead of potentially one. Anything else you want to share on the schedule side?
Sure, so a couple of things here. Just going to explain the schedule, there's a much more detailed version, again, in the full report, but the timeframe that we're looking at, that not only represent the construction period of the project, present the initial study, the preparation that the district need to undertake, the construction itself, the evaluation after the construction, and also temporary condition and planning. And the number at the lower corner, the lower right corner, this is, even though it's a similar work to what the deterioration or maintenance and deterioration estimate came to $143 million, but it's significantly higher because it account for all the escalation that needs to happen within those 14 years, that temp facility that the district need to acquire or build or rent a space to accommodate for students moving from different facilities as those major renovation take place, and also account for a much bigger scope. Like when we talk about roof replacement, within the maintenance, we're only talking about the roof replacement, but when we talk about a huge project that when you tackle the roof altogether, you need now to address all the structure upgrades that needed, all the other components within the building that needs upgrade as well with, with the roof.
So that sounded really complicated and complex and would take a really long time, so we're like, what other ways can we do this to make this more efficient? You know, there are three elementary schools that are, you know, relatively on the smaller side, and so what happened if we would take it all and build one new consolidated facility for grades pre-K through five? What would that cost? How would it compare? So if my animations work, we're seeing all those students, and they're in one new building together. And the benefit of that is you wouldn't need any portables or spring, swing space trailers. They can all be in their existing buildings until the new facility is built, everybody moves in together. The other benefit of this is then you are running one cafeteria instead of three. All the buses are going to one place instead of three. You have one set of art classrooms instead of three. So there are significant operational efficiencies to be considered. Then everyone can get out of the Col Avenue site and move to Eastford Road is probably the building that is best sized and identified for those students. And it would house, size-wise, really nicely, both the central office staff and Southbridge Academy. And that leaves three buildings that are now taking up significant costs to operate, maintain, and fix in the future that would be off the table to have to worry about. So of course, everything has benefits and challenges. So from an operation standpoint, this is most efficient. Curriculum-wise, facilities-wise, staff, challenges, it's a significant reorganization of schools and programs.
Yeah, similar to what we saw before, but the schedule is much smaller in terms of the number of years required to complete the project, as well as the number of the project that's being carried. As you see, it's only one project where it's linear. You develop the one consolidated facility and all other facility move to that space. Also, the cost that reflect on, for this option is significantly lower than trying to maintain all four facilities.
So that also sounds like a big undertaking. What's one different way we could think about it? So we know the two elementary schools have a lot of space, they have a lot of classrooms in them. Could they possibly fit all two to five elementary school students on one site? And the answer is yes. So we looked at that, and Charlton Street, because of the way that it's cited, is much more suitable to do so. So with some small strategic additions, a really slender classroom bar, all those two to five students could be accommodated on the Charlton Street school site. This lets pre-K through one, the program that's in Eastford Road right now, move to West Street, which would fully accommodate their program and include spaces like a gym that they're really in need of. And then same thing, Eastford Road building could accommodate Southbridge Academy and Colab. And again, there are many, many different ways that especially those pieces could play out. Maybe they move somewhere else, and that building can be sold and vacant, however it proceed. But this is kind of the other big category of ways to think about things, is the two through five students come all together on one site within the existing building and small renovations. Benefits, we think that this approach could potentially be the most feasible option, while everything still has benefits and drawbacks. And challenges similar to option one, significant renovation would still be needed at all of the existing buildings.
When we look at the schedule, the benefits of this option over option one is the temp facility required to carry out this project is significantly smaller in terms of the timeframe. As we only need it where we work on the first project, the addition to Charlton Street for those classrooms, and once Western Charlton moves to this facility, or the new Charlton School facility, the West Street becomes vacant, and then the renovation project can start on that school without the need for temp, temporary condition for other students. Again, the budget reflects this, it's somewhere between the other two options. It's a combination between a new facility and the renovation.
All right, so we did look at other options. Those options were not as beneficial as the three that we presented tonight, and in the report, we think they rise head and shoulders above the others. But these are simply just options to pursue with the study that backs them up as being credible, but certainly more work is needed. So here are the three options, and sort of the tail of the tape. You can see the relative costs between the three, and we'll talk about the MSBA process in a bit, but there are some financial contributions that could come through that process to help fund these projects, as if this was something that the town would move forward with. Okay, like I said, next steps, there are certainly things that need to be done, enhancing the infrastructure and engaging the community in doing outreach, finding out what is the plan to go forward? What is the district and the town really prepared to do? We have to prepare the district for that process and then begin a process of implementation. So that timeline takes a number of different steps, and we'll go through some of them here. We've used the MSBA process as a template for that approach, but certainly, it's not something that you must do, although there's benefits, as I said, financially to that process. There are certain stages that you would move through, and it's worth noting that starting the process isn't necessarily some, mean you have to fulfill it, but certainly waiting to start the process means it's going to take longer to finally get to the end of that, to the goal of getting the facilities that you need. So I'm going to let Kristin come back up and walk through the MSBA process, and we can get to the end and take questions.
Yeah, as Jeff said, so there are significant benefits to going through the MSBA process, namely, the matching funds that are available. And so they break it down, and their website is incredibly detailed and lists very publicly. You can watch all of their meetings, download all the documents to see how different districts are doing this. They break it down into different modules. So module one is the eligibility period, and that happens once a year. It opens in January, and it runs through April, it's kind of rolling. And so if you are interested in submitting an SOI, they call it statement of interest, that can happen once a year. Then module two, or module two, build the project team, feasibility study, which a requirement of their process is whatever project you submit for, you're required in feasibility study to look through renovation, renovation addition, and new construction, and kind of map out what those different costs are. So there will be a lot more study into this if you choose to go down the MSBA route, and then schematic design, project scope and budget, funding, construction administration closeout. So each of those modules are with check-ins at the state and voting with the state agency. So of course, eligibility period is the one most coming up on people's minds, 270 days, which is open and able to submit. And then again, these are the next ones that would come up after that. So once the district submits and MSBA moves, approves to move forward into module two, you would build the project team, which a really critical component of that is the OPM, the owner's project manager, that would help guide everything all the way through construction, and is really extremely well-versed in being kind of the representative of the owner throughout the entire process. So it is a fairly lengthy process. Each module, module two alone, takes six months. You can see three and four, 12 months. So it is quite a robust period of time, but you can ensure that there are many, many checks and balances and conversations, and everyone is coming to consensus.
feasibility study to look through renovation, renovation addition, and new construction and kind of map out what those different costs are. So there will be a lot more study into this if you choose to go down the MSBA route. And then schematic design, project scope and budget, funding, construction administration, closeout. So each of those modules are with check-ins at the state and voting with the state agency. So of course, eligibility period is the one most coming up on people's minds, 270 days, which is open and able to submit. And then again, these are the next ones that would come up after that. So once the district submits and MSBA moves approves to move forward into Module Two, you would build the project team, which a really critical component of that is the OPM, the owner's project manager, that would help guide everything all the way through construction and is really extremely well-versed in being kind of the representative of the owner throughout the entire process. So it is a fairly lengthy process. Each module, Module Two alone, takes six months. You can see three and four, 12 months. So it is quite a robust period of time, but you can ensure that there are many, many checks and balances and conversations and everyone is coming to consensus throughout that. And that is the end of the formal presentation that we have prepared.
I just want to wrap it up by saying that you can see the amount of work that's needed on the facilities. It was not light in terms of our review of the facilities that are there in terms of the amount of work that's necessary just as an infrastructure project. And then equally, so if you're going to go through all that effort to repair buildings, you ought to put the money where it's worth it, it's going to do the most good. And so realistically, pairing the two together, as Kristen mentioned earlier in the study, understanding where your education needs best match up with your facility needs in a practical way of going about a project like this is really where we focused the efforts of this study, really trying to come down on a practical approach. So welcome questions at this point, going through things, like I said, or Dr. Valar said earlier, apologies for not having the right number of packets, but there are the full, we have a couple of copies of the full study.
Before I open it up to both committees, just a quick question, I'm scanning through this. I was chairman of the middle high school building committee. At what point do you approach the town manager and go into the, is that under what part? As far as a construction project and the cost and all of this and the cost analysis, I get what this is, but at what time does it go to the manager for the formal structuring of a building committee?
Oh, okay, yeah. So depending on the process, you're going to use the MSBA process, you know, you're going to build that project team in Module Two. So you're going to want to put together an OPM and an architect design team at that stage. So in Module One, where you're really just putting together the project particulars, Statement of Interest, and getting the project off the ground, you're going to use the results of this study to essentially underpin some of the basic assumptions about how to move forward, the total ballpark of dollars that you're talking about. But once you get into Module Two, that's when you're really going to start honing in on what that project might look like. You've now selected a team of professionals that can then help you through that process.
The process has changed a little bit then because most of this was done by townside. And we were told back then, we were the landlords and you were the tenants, the school district. And if there's a problem with the buildings, we would get together and formulate this, what we're talking about now. And at some point, after they analyze what the needs are, the building committee was formed. So I don't know if that process is still...
All I can speak to is what the typical process is for a project, a school project. As part of a school project, the building committee or whatnot would be under the MSBA's essentially program.
But I think our town charter...
And then the school department.
I think our town charter comes to play with how to go to the ballot vote and, you know, the building committee and all that.
Yeah, there's going to be a whole process.
I'm just surprised that at this point here, the manager will get this, but I think there's things that happen on the town manager's side and town side about the town buildings.
Yeah, absolutely. This is a big, big next step. At this point, I think we're trying to give the facts as we see them, and then I think the town has to take it on.
Typically, there's some involvement with the town before submitting the SOI, the intent to go under the MSBA process. And then the OPM, the owner's project manager typically leads that building committee throughout the entire process.
The building committee picked the owner's project manager.
Okay, yeah, I've seen it work either way, that they pre-exist.
And even this study, this study here was done by Southbridge. What they did the last time, and this is what I'm asking, the last time we did it, they formulated a committee to evaluate their needs. They had teachers, they had the superintendent, they had citizens and councilor, whatever. They mixed up a committee from the community to come up with this document that was then presented to the town manager who presented, created the building committee. And then the building committee was basically getting the project manager, getting everybody on board to actually put it into brick and mortar and then, you know, blueprints. At that point there, we were on track with MSBA because you follow their regulations. I mean, I went to Boston once a week, once a month, and the closer we got to the project was competitive for the middle high school. And we ended up, we only, we ended up with both, only because we continuously fought to get the middle school in with the high school. High school is an automatic. And they didn't want to give us the middle school, but we were persistent. Our presentations in Boston with Dr. Hanley, we pushed it over the top, they came to Southbridge. And I told them, they don't understand, you're putting a Band-Aid on something that needs surgery. So then they said, well, we'll come out and see what you're talking about. We showed them the piece of land, we took them to the middle school, we took them to the high school, and when they understood what was going on, they gave us both and the middle high school was born. And at that point there, we went, we followed the MSBA process. But I just, this one here is a little different. This is coming from the, the data is coming from the school side, which was usually created by the school side, town side together on like an analysis committee, and then it went to the building committee. It was formed like that. But I thank you very much for this document, and at this time, I'll open it up to the committee members. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Did I hear your presentation correctly in that you said that you felt option three was the best option? And if so, why?
Best is a tough word. There are three options that could be interpreted, you know, we have the benefits and challenges of all of them in different ways. In some ways, option three is less substantial in the new building that you're doing, the addition, but you are also taking some buildings offline, so it's kind of a middle ground in some ways. And looking at what the process was to make that happen, in some ways, kind of that compromise solution could potentially be thought of as most feasible, but I rescind my use of best if I...
That's, that's what I thought I heard. I may have heard it wrong. I just found that curious because an option two, which you estimate is going to be the lower-cost option, a new facility is built and we basically decommission three older buildings. Whereas in option three, where we're consolidating grades two through five into one existing building, which is old, substantial renovations would have to be made to that building and the cost is substantially more. So I just was curious, I was just curious as to why option three was considered better. That's, that's why I...
One of the reasons that we consider option three as the most feasible option is because option two required the town to obtain a new land or to utilize part of the existing school land to build the new facility, which is, that might be problematic, but in terms of the cost, as Kristen said, it falls between the two options, which is, that's why we consider it the most feasible option. It might not be the best option for, in terms of the budget. But the goal here is to, at the end of any of these options, that you'll get a facility that is, undergo like a major renovation project, that everything was addressed and the facility can operate in a good condition for the next thirty years.
And one more question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. The costs that you, district contributions and the potential MSBA contributions, those are just theoretical, correct? Those are, I mean, costs could increase over time, so we could be talking about a lot more money. We may not get as much money from MSBA, correct?
Yeah, at the time that the study was done, that's where the figures came from. So the longer that time goes out and work hasn't proceeded, certainly it'll be more expensive. You know, everybody knows the construction costs have escalated and the MSBA program may change the formula at some point. We don't know that, but you know, that's a possibility. So they're accurate as of the time we did it, but not maybe in the future.
And, and just another question, if I may, Mr. Chairman, and then I'll yield. When you were calculating the, like, an option two, building a new building, option three, consolidating two to five in one building, were you considering that, were you using, assuming that, would you, excuse me, were you assuming that the student population would remain stagnant or were you building in a possible increase in the student population?
So we looked at the student enrollment numbers based on previous year's data, and I believe we had two projected out further. The district did elect not to do an enrollment analysis study based on live birth data, which is something that can be done to look at those numbers more in the future. But in general, the trend has been decreasing enrollment over the years that we studied. And so those were the numbers that we held moving forward, are the current populations.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Minion?
Thank you. A couple of questions. My first question is really concerning to me is when Dr. Valar mentioned that potentially we could be looking at a catastrophic event at one of the schools. How did you determine that? Out of concerning for me as a counselor is, is this going to happen sooner, later, or is this we assuming?
Well, we had, you know, experienced professionals, engineers review the buildings, and there were some significant issues, areas where we felt there were some imminent safety concerns, which we reported to the school district. But I think as Mina said, I think we can expect that all of the concerns that we have about the building will be present within a ten-year timeframe. That's why the timeframe was essentially accelerated to look at things within a ten, ten-year timeframe, because we didn't think some of these problems would last more than ten years. You'd have some major failure of some system before then. So there are major issues that need to be addressed, and that's part of the costs of the work at any of those facilities. The areas where there were more imminent issues, I believe, have been, you know, addressed appropriately. I'm not personally aware of them, but we did report them and the expectation was that there would be, you know, areas that could be off limits for people or certain areas, like for instance, the cornice that had pieces falling down from it. I think that area was cordoned off. So there are definitely needs that are present, and even in the time span that you see that we reported on for the MSBA process, there will likely still need to be repairs to the buildings ongoing during that timeframe until new facilities are put in place.
So if I may continue, is that, for me, when you hear the word catastrophic event, potentially happening is something that is, in my business life, threatening today, not ten years from now, down the road. So I'm concerned when something is said as a catastrophic event. And like I say, as being a retired firefighter, catastrophic events is something that happened now and not ten years, because ten years is too late. So I would hope that the school would report back to us as counselors and to say, what is actually a catastrophic event that potentially could happen sooner than later? Because truthfully, I don't want to put our kids in danger if something's going to happen because of the lack of us doing nothing. I believe on the option two, it was $118 million for the project, 180, yeah, $118 million for a new one standing facility for the elementary schools in itself. And moving, I believe, the kids from Cold Trade to Eastford Road, maybe keep vacating the other one. I don't understand, I want to have our kids educated and I want to get the best bang for the dollar. So you highlighted option two, and excuse my delay because I had some, I had a stroke a few weeks back, so I tend to do that. On the option two, you highlighted that and you, I would think that would be the preferred way to go, but it sounds like option three is the, what you're looking for is something more feasible. And by going to option three, the cost to the community is $122 million. Why would I spend $122 million when I can get a new facility for $118 million? I just, I guess you, I don't understand that.
I'd stress again that these are three good options, and I think it's up to you folks to determine where you want to go. Ultimately, eventually with the MSBA, you know, process, you'd end up be doing another study anyways. But I think the direction of where you want to head is really something that's up to you folks. We've given you three options I think are very good to move forward with, and I think we've tried to estimate approximately what the construction costs are, and that's what you see here in that line item, it's construction costs. So not included would be purchase of new land. So that's one piece of option two that we couldn't report on and would impact the total cost. So you might have to take into, to account other factors that would maybe outweigh one of these options. There might be, you know, concerns about, community concerns about going in one direction or another. But we didn't want to put our preferences in place of some of those items. It's really something for you to sort out.
And with the MSBA, what is the percentage estimated to, that they would cover for the cost?
Close to 50%.
50%?
Yeah. That was, sorry, the microphone didn't pick up. That was 50%, approximately.
And how about renovating existing buildings? Do they assist in that and what would the percentage be for that?
Within the MSBA study, they will determine which part of your projects that falls under the MSBA program and which part they can fund. So even under renovation projects, some of the existing spaces will fall under the program and can be funded, but some of the extra areas or spaces that is not utilized that Kristen talked about might fall outside of the scope of the MSBA. And the district will still have to renovate those spaces for the entire facility to be operational, but it won't be funded by the MSBA process or by the MSBA funding.
Okay, and if we were, what option three would be the renovations of the other two schools, are we going to vacate the school altogether and move the kids somewhere else?
Option three, yes, consider a temporary condition or temporary facility that to move all the kids from Charlton School to the temporary facility and renovate and build in addition to the Charlton Street facility to accommodate the student that is currently in Charlton and West. And after this phase, West became, become vacant and the process repeats itself again with West Street, so the kids from Eastford Road can move to the, to West Street and then Eastford Road become vacant and it can be renovated to house the Southbridge Academy and the district offices.
Because me, as a parent, my two boys went through a renovation at the elementary schools, and then they were at junior high, they went through renovation at junior high, and their quality of education failed them because of disruptions that were caused. In fact, if I remember right, we had some of the classrooms up here in this particular hall that they brought the kids in. I think that's all I have right at the moment, and if I come up with something else, I'll...
Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So 45 million out of 100, I mean, sorry, 53 million out of 118 would be what the state would put up, which is actually 45% match. I mean, I seem to recall that when we were going for the new middle high school, the minimum match I thought was 80%. I thought we got much higher, maybe closer to 90, 87, 85, something like that. I don't remember the minimum being any lower than 80% match. This was like when construction probably started in 2010 almost.
It varies significantly. I would reach out directly to the MSBA and they have different regional representatives to talk more about your district and the match number specifically and what they anticipate for that.
Okay, and then you have nine years to construct this building. Yeah, it says in the short term, over the next five years, we have $133 million in repairs. So I'm just kind of, you know, not able to wrap my head around how we could possibly have a $118 million project while housing students in buildings that need $133 million in repairs over the next five years. So to me, like the number of dollars that you need to spend in order to achieve option two, which is the new building, which people seem very interested in, it seems like it's way higher than 118 million because you're going to have to, how much of those 133 million dollars in repairs are you going to have to do in order to achieve the $118 million option two? option two project?
Yeah, I mean, that's a significant consideration. I don't know how much has been funded over the last 10 years, probably way less than $100 million. So I would imagine that's probably would, probably, there's not an appetite to fund that additional repair work, but it certainly, in our opinion, should be done, or would be needed. But you certainly wouldn't be doing all of it, because you're going to have a new building at that point, so there's no point in putting tons of money in an old building. But there's certain things, as the other counselor mentioned, that, you know, are worth doing while there's people there, while there's kids there, and so there'd be some money needed. Now, this chart that you see here is just construction cost for that particular option. And, you know, in this case, that would be a new building, an option two, so it doesn't take into account the repairs that would have to be done while that, you're waiting for the new building to come along. And the time scale also takes into account the MSBA process. Obviously, that's a longer process than if it would be simply, you know, the town doing it on their own, hiring an OPM, an architect, design a building, and be done with it, probably, you know, 50% longer maybe, or maybe even twice as long. So it's, it certainly would speed it up, but you wouldn't get the additional funds from the state. So we looked at it in the more conservative way, because that's, I think, a better way to report to you the potential outcomes.
So another thing, too, of the capital budget, you know, education, human services subcommittee, I've been on it for the last three years, chairman, two out of the last three, but I've seen the budgets come through and capital, I don't recall there being something like $6 to $12 million in capital requests over the next five or six years from the superintendent. And, I mean, these numbers would show that he's 10 times off at $133 million in repairs. I mean, is this, I don't see how, if there's that much in repairs, how you can do any of these options? Like, you don't have enough time to, like, to do any of these options and repair the schools, like, where's the money for that? You know? Well, what are we, what are we doing? You're just, you're agreeing with me that we can't do it.
I think it's a great question. I think I'd.
I love the presentation, by the way. Like, it is extremely informative, and I'd, but, I mean, I appreciate you agreeing with me. I guess I have nothing else left to say.
I suspect that, just like I said previously, that some things won't get done.
I'd just like to take a walk down History Lane just for a second. On the high school, we got 87% funding due to our demographics in Southbridge. 13% we had to pay. We sold a DPW bond in some old school, and we made about 13%. We didn't have to raise taxes. We got a new middle high school. Moving forward, if we go back a little bit more, the original option was a three-part elementary school. And a gentleman that owned a large business in town donated 100 acres, 68 acres, whatever it was, a lot of acres. We still own it, and it's earmarked for a school of recreation. That's why, as I've seen this presentation, as it comes over the town side, I think you might see some different ideas, and I know it's going to be a costly thing. And let's not forget, we have to go to the ballot for whatever percentage that we have to pay. And the ballot's tough. The fire station passed by a very small amount of votes. And now it's cost overruns, and now it's kind of putting it in limbo that we have to deal with that. That doesn't mean we stop on this. If we have problems with our buildings, we must address them and move them forward. At some point, they'll come to the financial question, which will have to go to the voters. And I think that the option that you put forward, we passed the three-part elementary, and then there was a gentleman that was sitting on the council, brought it back through a charter clause, and it went for a second ballot vote, and it failed. And then it came, they redid the building committee, and it came back as additions and renovations to each elementary school, and that's what we have today. And, you know, if history has taught us something, and I was always a pro-education counselor, that sometimes you gotta bite the bullet then, and it wouldn't have the big problem we have now, but they chose not to. So, and it was up to the citizens to make that decision. It wasn't the politicals. So moving forward, I think, I'd like to open it back up and put some thought into all of our heads about, these are not the only options. When it gets into town hands, we might have to go further into the options. Counselor Vivas.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all of the information, and it's really helpful. Are the other options, you mentioned seven of them, are they in the full report?
Two of them in the report, and two other options in the full report.
Okay, so we, in all in the.
I can expand a little bit on that. When I was talking about seven, it was just a figure of speech, that we went through many, many variations, and you could break down these three or the five in the full report into more alternate scenarios. So example, like, where is Southbridge Academy going to go? Another variation that we have in the report is, what if that program moves to be a new addition on the wing of the middle high school? And then those students can go and move back and forth. But the real meat, the kind of three biggest categories are what we brought forward to you tonight.
Great, thank you. And we'll get a copy of the full report?
Yeah, the full report's pretty thick. We do have a couple printed copies here. People would like to take them with them, but you'll have a copy of the digital version.
Great, I would, thank you, I'd appreciate that. My other question, and just looking at next steps, which may be a question for the receiver or, I don't know, someone else, but thinking about, you know, this, any of these projects are quite lengthy in time, and sort of how that fits into the timeline with the school committee, and being in receivership, and sort of, you know, how involved, or what is the school committee's role in these next steps?
Thank you for that question. The school committee is seated here this evening because they serve an important part of this process, and have to work collaboratively with the town council to formulate, like, what the next steps are going to be. Typically, part of that process is talking about the educational needs of the school side. We've heard a lot of information about that this evening. The next steps, as Chairman Lazo has pointed out, is we will need to have a conversation and with the town manager, who unfortunately is not here, and begin to, you know, pull apart these ideas and think about what works in the context of Southbridge. To me, there's a few really important details that I think should be stressed about this. One, yes, our schools are in significant need of repair, and I use the word catastrophic system failure. When I say that, what I mean is the heat might stop working. You can't have school if there's no heat in the middle of January. The roofs may fail. You can't have school if water's pouring into the classrooms. Power, and I've seen all this happen in schools. Power panels can blow out, and you no longer have AC or electricity, excuse me, AC current in a building, and so you have to shut it down. Our fuel systems could go, our boilers, roofs, et cetera, windows, doors. So I want to be on record, is we've seen that. The cost estimates that we brought forward in our capital plan for the last seven years came from projects that the town manager brought on board. So there was a report that a previous town manager funded through a grant that gave us those estimates, but that was before the pandemic. Everything is different now, so the costs are way up. Swing space is a critical consideration. And swing space is, where do you put the kids while you're working on the building? Because it's almost impossible to do the renovations that they're talking about with children in school. Climate, the dust, all that stuff, you can't have children in that facility. So where would we put them? That's a significant problem, as I think about Southbridge. I'm not aware of a facility that can take 400 children from ERS and house them for the period of time it'll take to build a new school. So that's a real significant consideration. Portable classrooms, the last time I interacted with a portable classroom was in 2007, and they cost $300,000 apiece. I have no idea what they cost now, but we would need 15 of them to replace, you know, a school, and how do you, and where do you configure them? So those conversations are important. As the counselor pointed out, I did share that history about the three pod classroom with this group, because there's a lot of sense that can come out of that. I do believe you need a building that you can move kids into, so you can then figure out which other buildings you're going to keep, or sell, or demolish. But I'm also keenly aware of the fiscal pressures that this town faces. They're only building. So bottom line, to the involvement of the school committee, regardless of the direction, if receivership's here or not here, the school committee has to play a key role in this process. They represent the voice on the education side, but ultimately expenditures, the ownership of the buildings, that's town council. And the town council is going to, you know, have a large, loud voice in that process. Thank you.
Committee member March.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. First, I want to thank Mr. Jeff Shaw and his team for a well-put-together presentation. It was extremely informative, and I do like the cost breakdown. Honestly, it just kind of gives you a better, better understanding of what we're having to deal with overall. I wanted to ask, as far as these projections, so this was made, I'm assuming, with data as far as per cost construction and everything like that from 2023, I would presume, would probably be the best accurate. So we're already behind the eight ball a little bit, even though with the reduction in inflation, that inflation still occurred. So we're probably not even looking at $118 million. We could be looking at $125 million as we're sitting here right now. And that's only going to go up day by day. My question, I guess, Dr. Valar, I hate to call you back up here. In 2021, we had sat down, you and I, with, at the time, Vice Chair Shay, we had discussed the MSBA plan. Do you, we had proposed, there was two options for the facility and then emergency repair, and we had earmarked, I think you had said, the MSBA has a program for emergency repair through it, with the facility study and everything. Is that correct?
That is correct. There is a program.
And that would cover typically 65% to 70% of emergency repair costs? I believe from, on an estimate, obviously, there's no holding to it, but would that be a fair recollection?
To be honest, you would definitely want to engage with them. It is possible they can get that percentage of reimbursement. You'd have to make sure the project meets their very specific requirements. And, you know, part of the challenge you face is codes. And so what work do you do on a building? What are you allowed to do without tipping off other codes and creating a domino effect of other work that you need to do? So it would be, it's a challenging approach.
Now, can you apply for both the emergency repair and new building alongside each other?
That I don't know. TJ, do you have any experience with trying to do that?
Generally, I think that the repair of a building is a problem.
So what, the translation I have from that is, in a sense, the state is trying to use funding sources to drive locals to create a building that's going to last 30 years. So if you choose to rehab a building, it's supposed to last 30 years after you invest the money on the rehab, or if you're building a new building, it should last 30 years. So it's, likely, you're not going to get funding to rehab a building while you're building another building to use for the same educational purpose. Now, some of these plans talked about the potential of building a new building and renovating old buildings, but they're for different groups of students to occupy, and different grade levels.
The reason why I ask is to Counselor Montigny's point, you know, we have these looming costs on, you know, system failures with the roof. You just said earlier that we have an oil heater tank at West Street that needs repair, an elevator offline. I know personally, in 20, right before COVID, there was a roof failure that wiped out the library, I think it was before COVID, it was right around there, wiped out the library and a couple of tech rooms on the bottom floor, and we ended up going through our insurance to help afford and pay for that. So what would be your best estimate in the last few years of what we spent in capital expenditures and increased insurance premiums? I mean, I'm sure we've probably gone in excess of, what, $500,000 in repairs overall in the last four years from catastrophic failures?
Well, we typically get about $300,000 in capital funding from the town, and we typically use it, so.
We're looking at over $1 million already since COVID.
And the flood at West Street was an over $1 million claim.
Would it be safe to say the premiums went up substantially for us, operationally?
That I can't answer. The town manager could, though.
Okay, I just, I, we just passed the fire station, barely on the ballot, barely. That was a project that was, has been put off since before my time here in Massachusetts, let alone Southbridge. And that was 20 years, people have been talking about it, from what I gather from people. I don't want to see this go into that situation where we're contemplating best options over 20 years, and then we run into a $250 million facility to build a new one, because that's the most feasible option, because to repair it can cost $500 million. I just, I appreciate this, I just want, I hope moving forward that the town council and the school committee can work together with a sense of urgency alongside town manager and Southbridge Public Schools to try to expedite an MSBA application, so we can start moving this forward, because overall, the superstructures of these buildings are pushing 100 years old. From 1933, if I recall, West Street and Charlton Street and Eastford Road with renovations in '93, after, and if my memory serves me correct, when they passed the Student Opportunity Act, they also funneled an additional 800, I think it was $800 million into, annually into the MSBA, so there's more money in that fund, hopefully, to Counselor Lazo's, or Counselor Montigny's point, they're cover up to 80% based on, as Counselor Lazo said, our demographics. But I just hope that after this presentation and these costs that we're seeing that are probably already inaccurate and outdated, that we move forward amicably and briskly on getting this done for our students. Thank you.
Any other questions? Committee member Martina Shay.
I remember earlier, when we first started talking about this, that there was some difference in the amounts of money you could get for a repair issue and for building a new building, and that the procedures could be longer for one than the other. Is that no longer true?
So the accelerated repair program is a lot faster to get into and a lot faster to get projects funded through the MSBA. But as Dr. Valar mentioned, the MSBA would like most probably to fund both projects, so they usually work with the district during the eligibility period and the feasibility study to determine which better options that's suitable for the district facility. And from there, you will apply for either program.
So you're saying that, I get the fact that we can't do both at the same time, but if we choose to repair, that would be faster than if we chose to build a new?
So building new is a, is different, okay, repairs is different than major projects. To me, a renovation project is still falls under major projects. It doesn't fall under accelerated repair programs. Accelerated repair programs covers, like, just one-off projects, like, if you want to go and replace windows, or just replace the roof, but the rest of the facility is in a good condition and still can operate beyond this repair.
Okay.
So the MSBA won't fund a project that is not going to make a big difference in improving the facility in general.
Okay, so we either have to do some, we could have one small issue and have it fixed, but if with our buildings, we have to go full on?
Yes.
I would just like to add a point here. When I talk of the council being the landlord's townside, we have responsibilities to capital improvement on roofs. If roofs are failing, we need to know they're failing. If there's an oil tank that needs to be taken care of, we need to know that. And during the budget session, during capital, when we're doing borrowing and we're moving money around, upper money and all this, the knowledge that we are given, we could try to handle some of these problems. As a landlord, think of it that way, and our tenants, we have to be working together, because some of the issues that we're talking about here should be taken care of on the capital, like the oil tank. The town hall is going to be put under a study. Sooner or later, this building is going to need renovation. Not major, but, you know, outside work, inside work, it's an old building. If we don't know, we can't fix what we don't know. And I think going forward, there has to be a short term, long term. This is the way we built the middle high school. We didn't abandon Southbridge High School, or abandon. We didn't abandon Southbridge High School or abandon the middle school. We, we did have a catastrophic problem. We had a probable collapse. We had a flexicore building, and the flexicore was leaning in pockets that was moving. And we had an embankment that, for some reason, in the 60s, they didn't use compaction as they do nowadays, and the library was going to fall off the high school. That's what put us at the top of the hill for the funding. And then we fought to get the middle school into it. But we didn't abandon the building, we took the library off as a, had nothing to do with the MSBA, the town did that as the landlord. And then we finished off that side of the building, added a recreation area for it to be used as a viable building, put a new rubber roof on the area that was near the library. We had a gentleman named Mike Como, who was a maintenance director, who had all the records of what has to be done to this building. And we knew there was asbestos in that building. We knew that the roof needed to be done. And we knew there was a boiler downstairs that needed serious work. We were in contact with the state, the environmental group, encapsulation was the answer at the time to get the library off, to get the, but you had a plan. The town had a plan, the landlord had a plan, and we executed it. At this point here, it's a viable building. A new maintenance director comes on, and we have to tackle the asbestos on the boiler. It was something that was encapsulated, and that we did everything the state wanted it. And then moving forward, it fell on the next generation coming in as the maintenance director. And he did a great job with that, the town had to step up. When you have these problems, the landlord has to step up. Whether it is a bonding issue, we have roads, we had to do a bonding issue, and we're tackling all the roads. It's a problem that came up. The fire station came up, it went to a ballot, we have a dilemma because it's way over budget that the ballot, that the people voted on. The people might have to revisit it, something that the landlords have to take care of. But the thing is, we have chiefs in those buildings telling us what's wrong with those buildings. We have a police chief that gives us upgrades on HVAC, everything. We have a registry of motor vehicles, we had to put a whole new HVAC system in, we had to put a new oil tank in. We didn't go for any loans on that. We did it in-house with our capital money that we deal with. So I'm glad and I'm happy that we have this presentation, because what happens next, the landlords have to step up to the plate. The long-term plan and the short-term plan. I'm very interested in dealing with these catastrophic short-term plans immediately, not putting them off. But at the same time, if we're going to sell those buildings, we have to sell them in some sort of good condition. And as a responsible landlord, we need to continue to maintain those buildings, even if we're building a brand-new three-part, and we're going to do it up on that land as it was planned. We still need to maintain our buildings as those kids are learning in those buildings. I went to Southbridge High School through a renovation. We were in the building, all the construction and material was in the gymnasium, we lost our gym. They cordoned off a half a building and renovated the coal trade building. Then they came in during the summer and did the academic wing. We never missed a beat, we only lost the gymnasium. So gym class was out for that half a semester. When you're talking about building a building, we built the middle high school, it didn't take us 10 years to build that. It took two years of planning and I think it was two years of construction. And we were on time, on the budget, and we did not have to raise taxes. We need to get in the same room with Mr. Valar, the construction people, and we need to figure out, do we want to put an addition on an old building? Do we want to renovate an old building? The landlords have to make that decision. The taxpayer has to know that we are very frugal in what we're doing. Nothing's going to be cheap, no matter what we do, don't fool yourselves. A construction project is very expensive at this point. We were fortunate we did the middle high school. We had a bad economy and hungry contractors, and the bids all came under budget. So we're in an opposite right now, and we're going to have to deal with it. We can't put our heads in the sand. So going forward, if there are any questions by these committees, now's the time to Q&amp;A, because I got a feeling this is going into a more severe approach through a building committee. Mark, Eddie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First of all, we just received this. This is the first time I've even seen this, so I don't think it's fair for us to say, well, we got to do this, or we got to definitely do something here. We need time to study this before we go further into it. I just want to point out, first of all, just for the record, the official title of the town is the Town of Southbridge, not City of Southbridge. Just thought I would let you know that when you print up some more of these. We have, I remember when you did the new high school, and we were told the old high school was a catastrophic, going to fall down, and it hasn't fallen down. So that is a temporary solution to house the kids if they want to go in, if they want to put them somewhere. Can't say we don't have any place to put them. They could certainly fit them in there, there's plenty of room in the old high school. But like I said, we just now receive this, I don't think that we should just sit here and say, oh, we got to do something. Let's take our time, take a look at it, see where we want to go. And you are right about a building committee that's in the bylaws, section three, that we have to form a building committee, and it has to include an architecture, an architect, engineer, a lawyer, somebody from the school side, school committee, we can't just, they can't just run the whole thing and it has to be done by the building committee. So you are correct in that regard. But that's all I'll say for now, and I, you know, just now received this, I'm not going to jump in, jump in and say, we got to do something about this now.
I think we have to keep things in perspective, I think you're 100% right. But just point of clarification, the high school was collapsing. We took that portion of the building down, renovated the back of the building with town funds to make the building safe again for use. The whole building wasn't collapsing, the back of the building was collapsing. That was the media center, which was dangerous for anybody to be in the building, the building inspector condemned it, and nobody was allowed to go into that portion of the building while, until we got an engineer in here and tore the building down. And we tore that portion of the building down. That was the collapse we were talking about when we said, it's falling down. On the fire station, and it didn't take a long time to study the fire station, the fire station has been kicked down the road. When the schools needed additions to the elementary schools, the fire station took the backseat. When the police station was falling in on Main Street, the fire station went in the backseat again, they built a new police station. The fire station was coming up, the new middle high school came up, the fire station went to the backseat again. Then the fire station finally came to the forefront, got voted on, got approved, and now we have some financial dilemma with some of the things that's imploding the value, not the value, but the cost of the job, and we're going to have to go visit it again. That doesn't mean we stop this movement for the schools. We need Valar, Mr. Valar and his staff, they know what the needs are. We are the brick and mortar that are going to move forward with a building committee if needed, I think this is where we're at, even if it's additions or if it's a new building. I think we're going to have to follow the bylaws and the law for the next step. But to stop, we're not going to stop.
Could I just add one more thing?
Go ahead.
We, the taxpayers are now on the hook for the fire station, we're on the hook for the animal control, we're going to have to do something with this town hall. I don't know how much more you think the taxpayers of Southbridge can take here. It's just a lot, I'm not saying we can't do it, so we have to do something, but just keep that in mind, we are overtaxed right now in all these buildings.
There is a big task ahead, and a lot of money is going to be spoken, and councils are going to have to make decisions with the manager, and the people are going to have to probably see the ballot question again. Number March?
I was going to say, I've seen in the past with past seatings of the town council, it's just, just a, we can multitask here. It's tough, it's not easy, and it's, it's going to be difficult, but the time and effort that town councils have passed moving forward to now, and I'm sure as we continue to move forward into the future. I was actually just about talking, talking to my wife about this the other night, Southbridge is on a come up, you can see it, where people are moving in. My parents are actually looking to move out this way, and they're looking at Southbridge as a potential destination. You have, when you have more people moving in, the tax burden is alleviated because you have more tax revenue. So yes, the taxpayers are, as was put, on the hook for the fire station. That's kind of what we do for the town that we live in. It's terrible, and nobody likes it, nobody, I don't, I haven't met one person that loves to pay taxes in my life. But it's what we have to do, and it's, it's, it's going to be difficult, but, you know, the toughest, the road to great success is always the toughest at the start. And, you know, we've been in the beginnings of a comeback for quite some time, and this is going to be the toughest time for this town and for the taxpayers, both commercial and residential. But the payoff at the end is going to be even greater because we're going to have a better school system, we're going to have a better curriculum as we continue to move forward, both out of receivership and as the curriculums that have been implemented continue to lay hold and improve over time. We're, it's, we can't be so short-sighted to look at what we've got in the next five years, we've got to map out the next 30. And I think governments, not just in Southbridge, but over the last 30 years, tried to address things in the now and put off in the future. And we have a prime opportunity as a collective body as moving forward that we don't need to follow that norm. I'm just as concerned about the taxpayer as I am one, and I, last time I checked, I woke up made of flesh and blood, I ain't made of money. So, you know, we have to just continue to move forward as the building committee moves forward, trying to find the most economic option and work with the town manager and the finance office with the school system, and taking advantage of all grant opportunities, both state and federal. There's, I'm sure there's federal grants that we can utilize too to try to offset some of these costs, but we just, you know, we don't need to commit to a pay, to a check right now. But I think what we need to do right now is put our best foot forward and start doing the necessary things in order to start moving some of this, if any of this, forward, because it's going to take time. And with inflation and the way everything is and the way our school buildings are, time is of the essence, so, thank you.
Committee member Kabitski? Head to hand up?
I thought it was just in my head that my hand was up, but go ahead. On options two and three for the schools that are vacant and sold, have they been assigned a value, and if so, has that been incorporated into these final numbers?
Do you mean like a real estate value?
Right, when it says vacant, sold, is that, have they been assigned a value and therefore had subtraction or addition to the final number?
No, the schools have not. The assessment of those buildings hasn't been incorporated into this, and our team didn't assess the actual street value of selling the buildings.
So there are no current estimates as to what their value could be?
Not in our study, no, no, it wasn't considered. So those proceeds, should they be sold, would be added back?
Of course. How would that be done? Who would, who would give us that sort of information? Because that certainly could place a huge role in what the town is then required to pay, three buildings, I mean, I don't know the market at all, but.
Sure, I mean, there'd be a separate process certainly from the school situation, and the town would have to, you know, either conduct a study of the value of it or put out a request for proposals or something like that to developers to see how much it would be worthwhile for them.
If I may, the last time they did this, they, when you come up with your final agreement on what you want to do, which I think that's what we have to work on, is what is the option? And as long as we exercise all options, we come up with the option. At that point there, before you go to the ballot, you have to make the citizens in the know on we're selling these, if that's the option. At that point there, we, the building committee, would get the value of each building and show the public that if you're selling three buildings and the option is to build one big, I'm just giving the fictitious thing, at that point there, the taxpayer has to have the full picture of the liquidation, and then does the liquidation go towards the construction? These are the questions that are in the future, once you get the final option.
Doesn't that, wouldn't this play a huge role in deciding what the final option is?
Absolutely.
Right, so.
Absolutely. And I think when the building committee, I'm saying the building committee is formed, I think that at that point there, we usually build a building committee with a cross-section of people that are involved in education, construction, engineering, architect. I mean, I've been on a building committee that had all of those people on there, and they were all Southbridge residents, and they all had input on the direction of where to go. It wasn't one side or without the input of the other side. We have to do this together, because I'm a construction guy, but I don't, I'm not an educator. So we always needed the educators to get together and work on what the needs are, and then we did the brick and mortar. But the committee was made up of both, so they were all at the table, they're all stakeholders. Any further discussion? Councilor Daniels first, and then Councilor Trinidad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Valar and his team, as well as the architectural team for being here this evening. It's definitely some eye-opening material that we're getting tonight. I just have a couple of questions. First off, was during the study, was there any sense developed about what option might be more educationally sound for our students, for our children? After all, it is for the students.
Yeah, I very much appreciate that question. You know, we've heard a lot of conversation about money, and so when we talk about the delivery of curriculum, there are advantages and disadvantages to some of these setups, and I do think this would be a longer conversation, but a brief summary. You know, ERS is currently a pre-K to grade one school. Many people would argue that is a very good concentration of resources around the development of early literacy, and that's likely why this town chose to create the school in that format at some point in the past. So if we were to decide to, hey, let's combine all three schools, now you're pulling that focus into a more larger general elementary school. It does not mean you can't still focus the instruction in a way, but the climate and environment of the school changes very dramatically. From a staffing position, I have to also point out that I have seen in various places, even the town I live, where they've consolidated schools, it is very difficult to consolidate staffs, and it actually takes a long time to redevelop a school culture. And that is a part of this planning process that will take a long time, and that's essential to delivering good instruction. Operationally, having the grades two through five groups in the same building, I think would be the same benefit as having the pre-K one in the same building. So I think that could be a good thing. And from a transition perspective, having all kids in one building is a real strong positive. So you can make arguments on either side of a lot of these pieces. I think ideally, first and foremost, a safe, attractive, supportive environment is going to be the best for kids, period. There's actually studies that have been shown, it actually increases student learning when they're in a more positive environment. So I think that would probably be the most important piece. Then it's looking at benefit factors of combining groups of kids and staffing and whether or not we can be more efficient with the delivery of instruction. And I do see some benefits to our current pre-K one in a two-through-five scenario. But we could debate whether or not that's worth 10 million, 20 million, 30 million, like it becomes a real factor. And I would default always to a bright, attractive environment as more important than any other piece, because you can deliver instruction. So it's a long-winded way of saying there's a lot of options here. Good quality classrooms, making sure you have access to the right facilities are essential. Health and safety are the most important thing, and then from there, we can adapt instruction based on environment is what we're currently doing. New buildings will be better for learning, period. There's no doubt about that. So I think as we engage with this committee moving forward, we'll be able to better weigh the impact of the decision is really the most important thing to consider. So going into this, I know it's hard, you're hearing these huge numbers, but I think it's diving into the details. As this team has done, they've outlined some of the big pieces, you can get to more granular decision-making as this process moves forward that'll meet the needs of the town. So it's going to be complicated.
Thank you. Is there any way we can develop a sense of what operational efficiencies would develop over time once the projects are done?
Yes, I think that's, that's an easier project, right? In the sense that if, let's say we decide to combine all three elementary schools in one facility. We can look at the enrollment projections, and we do, by the way, do one every year as a part of our budget process, so that is updated, and why it's not part of this study. So we can look at that, and we can look at our staffing, and we can look at our class size ratios, and then you can project out. We. We absolutely would be more efficient if West Street and Charlton Street School were combined. I could cut classes right now or move resources to something. For example, say, hey, we don't need a third-grade teacher, but we can hire a reading teacher. Like, there are ways that you can be far more efficient by combining schools. You would need, you know, fewer building principals. You would need fewer nurses. And there's like a lot of things that become operationally less expensive moving forward. I would hope we would have the conversation about how those resources get shifted into other needs that aren't currently being met. But there's certainly going to be a staffing efficiency if you have one building versus three. There's no doubt.
Okay. I have some sense, you've given me some sense, all of you, tonight, about how the MSBA runs and what their contribution rates are. Does the fact that we're a socio-economically disadvantaged town have any impact on, to your knowledge, for further granting and funding sources besides the MSBA?
I'm not aware of any other sources that we're going to, TJ's not either. No, I think MSBA is going to be the gold standard of support for building schools, for sure.
I've recently seen many districts utilizing federal dollars in new builds for more sustainable types of infrastructure. And so that's something that could be looked at. But I don't know of any federal programs for lower-income students specifically. That doesn't mean they don't exist.
Okay, thank you. My last question would be, is there any sense as to how many temporary classrooms we would need based upon, I guess option three would be the one. Option two looks like we wouldn't need them.
Well, I can tell you there's 12 grade-level classrooms, for example, at Charlton Street School, right? But then that's just a classroom. It would be very, very difficult to, on the spot, I can't tell you. But it'd be very difficult to figure out how that's going to work, to be honest. I've seen temporary classrooms attached to schools where I've worked in other places. One takes a lot of space, you got a lot of wiring, you got a lot, there's a lot to it. So we would have to really think hard about where and how that could happen, if that is a potential solution. I would also want to see if there's any funding in Massachusetts for temporary classrooms. In my Connecticut experience, they're often not included in reimbursements. So we would want to get clarification on anything like that before we move forward with a plan. Because they are costly.
Would it be determined after we pick the option?
So Mina can confirm me on this. But all the options that include temporary facilities, we have included a placeholder number in there. All of these numbers have contingency based in there. And it's based on projects that we know of for relatively similar-sized schools. So obviously, if, whatever scenario to move forward with, if that includes portables, there would need to be a more thorough study done on exactly what that would be including. But a ballpark estimate for that is included in these options.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, one more question, if I may.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Do the architects know of any other communities that they've been involved with that have had similar situations? So that we could perhaps just begin to do some research with other communities and see what they've done and how it's turned out?
Yes, I'm currently working with two different districts that are going through the feasibility study process that hopefully should get a yes vote from MSBA tomorrow. All of those districts are listed online, who's in what different phase of the project. I'm happy to provide specific connections with those, but definitely recommend looking around for other districts in your area as well.
Thank you. I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Councilor Shinya and Councilor Rivas.
Just a couple things in with Dr. Vallar. The MSBA, I guess, is actually the financial division of school buildings.
I'm sorry, what is your question?
The MSBA, I think it is.
Massachusetts School Building Authority?
Right. They're the ones that, that, that provide the funding.
Well, they control the process that awards the funding, yeah.
Can DESA come into Southbridge and make us move either faster or take over the process? If we're not moving fast enough, we're not taking any action, can the state come in and take that away from us?
I know that Holyoke, which is under state receivership, has engaged in school building projects and so has Lawrence. I don't believe the department played any, any major role in that other than receiver being part of the process.
I want to thank, thank you all for coming here tonight. I think the most important, important part of this whole, whole process is the keeping the door of communications open. We often criticize the school for the lack of knowledge when something happens or the, or the lack of being told about it. I'll use for tonight, for instance, is these presentations, we knew that this meeting was going to happen for some time. And we get the presentation, the night of the presentation. It would have been nice to be able to review it at least over the weekend and maybe have a better question and answer session. So I hope we can move forward and be open for better communications and sooner than later. I just, I always find it surprising that we, you know, it's like the oil tank issue that's happening. At some point in time, it sounds like you're going to have to come to council for some additional money if it turns into a major event. I think letting us know beforehand, before this even tonight, would have been better. So if we can just open the door of communications a little bit better, especially on this project with everybody involved, including us, I think it would be much, it would be a much easier and maybe better process. Again, I want to thank you all very much for coming tonight and bringing this forward.
Councilor Rivas.
Just kind of circling back, I know that you mentioned that you had talked to teachers in the building when you were kind of assessing. I'm wondering if the SCA got a copy of this presentation before tonight? If they have any specific preferences or that they've, you know, in listening, that they've, you know, kind of said, oh, as a group, we think option one or two or three? Just wondering, the communication that has happened with the, with the union and also communication with families as part of this process that you've already done? So just those two questions.
We did do outreach to families last December and conducted a survey. It was the holidays. We had a limited number of responses, but did incorporate that feedback in the process that we moved forward. We, as a design team, have not spoken any, with anyone specifically in the union capacity. I'm not sure if the district has in communication about this. But we sure, certainly, we were in every classroom, spoke with many, many teachers and administration multiple times through the development of the process.
Thank you.
And the SCA is aware of the current state of the buildings. And we have been in discussion about tonight. That's why they're here to observe. And I think when the time comes, they'll certainly want to be involved. I do want to stress, these are options to get to thinking about things. These aren't the solution to the problem. These are a starting point. And these are figures to give you an idea, to wrap your arms around how big the problem is and some of the major challenges that you face. But I think I've heard the chairman say it a few times, but these three options aren't necessarily the option, right? And so there's a lot of work that has to happen moving forward. And I do also, while I have the mic, want to clarify that we have capital funds that the town has issued to us because we have been talking about failures of systems for the last two or three years. So you haven't heard about this oil tank because we have the funds to fix the oil tank at the moment. If I run out of funds, we absolutely will have to come to the town council. We can't use operating budget to fix major capital items. So that would be a request of the town council. I want to thank our maintenance department because they work real hard to try to keep those costs down. They do a good job. Thank you.
Any other questions by any of the councils? If there is no further discussion, I'd just like to say thank you very much for the presentation. If there's a closing statement?
No, no statement. Just thank you all very much for your questions. I really appreciate the opportunity to...
I know this is going to be the spark to a beginning of a bigger process. I think the townspeople have to understand that. I thank Mr. Vallar and I thank the group that the presentation's in front of us. I will be giving this to the town manager and I will be having a long conversation when I see the town manager. And I'm sure that the school committee and the council will be working together hand-in-hand on a solution. Not sure what that solution is. I think we're ahead of the, kind of ahead of ourselves here. And I think we have to look at it, as Councilor Mark Eddy said, and look in-depth that if there maybe is another option or maybe something else. Because I know when you do the feasibility of the educational portion, that usually drives the brick and mortar. But I thank you very much. Job well done. If there's no further discussion, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion by, motion by Murch, second by Montigny. All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, all present. Meeting adjourned.